...silence or whatever you gotta do to make them quiet, we would appreciate it. The first thing we have is we're gonna have our invocation by Dr. Robert Forks. He's, I know, I saw him in the audience. And then we're gonna have the pledge to the leeches to the flag. So if y'all would stand.
Welcome to the prayer meeting. Father, we thank you this day for the blessings that are ours, for the love that you share with us, and for the mercy and grace that you afford each one of us. I thank you for these who are gathered in this room, and I thank you, Father, for their willingness to serve and make a difference. It's a call you have for every one of us to take the gifts that you've given us and use them for your glory and honor. And I pray that that would be what would happen with this body this evening. We pray for our city, pray for the needs of so many people, Father, but we thank you for the fact that you have an answer, and we pray that you would show that to us. Guide these individuals who are here tonight, give them wisdom, strength, courage, and also mercy, all those things they need, Father, that you show to us. Just thank you for this city, and I thank you for all the employees, all those who are here, all the citizens. We just thank you, Father, for the fact that you put us here. Help this city to be what you'd have it be, a great place where you're lifted up. We just thank you for that love that you share with us every day. And I ask all these things this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Dr. Forks, and we appreciate that. Dr. Forks is the pastor at Madison Avenue Baptist Church, not to mention our police pastor, so he's really important to our operation here. So we appreciate you being here tonight.
Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have our roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Rockwell?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Councilmember Foster?
Here.
Councilmember Hand?
Here.
Councilmember Alton?
Here. Everyone's present, good. Next, we have the minutes from our work session, regular meeting of November 2nd, 2015, for adoption.
Move to the dot.
Second. Any discussion? All of the folks say aye? Aye. Most curious. Public comment period. We will open this to anyone from the public for a period of three minutes. Sheph Herd, if you would, give the clerk your, and we know you, but give her your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm the mayor, council. Congratulations on the new session and look forward to the things of progress we're gonna make this year. I've tried to compact this into three minutes if we can. I believe it was August 14th, a group of sixteen businesses was represented in a meeting with, at that time, Mayor Pro Tem Chuck Allen, City Manager Scott Stevens, and then Mayor King came in about halfway through the meeting. There was thirty-one people in the meeting. We addressed issues privately to you, and we asked the newspaper to leave, and we asked the DGDC because we wanted to keep it private amongst the businesses, issues and concerns we had. Those issues and concerns were lost businesses, businesses closed due to street scape, the construction. First off, let me say this, street scape being completed has been a wonderful thing for downtown Goldsboro. It's brought returning customers and brought new customers, so it is a positive impact. But during that time, it created a lot of hardships for the businesses. We addressed with you as a group our concerns, and I think if you remember, it was, at times it got very emotional for some of the people who've been here a long time. I'm a new business, I opened in April. To try to nutshell it, we discussed options and help for the people. You had expressed that there was $60,000 that could be possibly appropriated out to help businesses. Later date, you and I talked again privately about it, and you'd stated it was around $20,000 in the meeting. Scott had outlined some things that there was possible help there for people. You know, we all struggle with utilities. Obviously, you don't control the electric company, the gas company, but you do have control over the water company, and said that there was possible help there for the people. Through correspondence personally, we won't get into my personal business, but I've corresponded with yourself and with Scott, and we're still working on some issues there that I'm not particularly satisfied with the results, but as a consensus, the business owners down here, and I want to use the word consensus because I don't like majority and I don't like the word minority because they create division. Consensus is a unity of the average, and that's what we have, and I do speak for the consensus of the people that were at the meeting. It's on public record. Scott has a copy of this, I believe you do, of all the people that was in the meeting. We feel like that we have not been responded to, and I say "we" as a group. My personal responses with you and Scott, I've got those, and we're still working on those issues. But as a group, the people have not been responded back to. You said in the meeting you would get back to us about the issues that you addressed. The consensus is no one's been gotten back to except for a couple of us that have individually engaged. There's a disconnection or a consent amongst the group, they feel disconnected from the city, they feel neglected. Whether that's a true statement or not, on your belief, the city council needs to reach out to the businesses, and you need to make sure that we reconnect and that we do connect together and work as a group and answer these questions that you said that you would answer that have not been answered to this group. Again, I say street scape's a wonderful thing, but there's a lot of damages that were done to small businesses. Two businesses closed during this time, others strode. There's a landlord down here, he said, I can use his name, Ernie Mansour. He has five businesses within the district of Center Street. He's had to give them relief on their rent because they were, or lost sales during this time. There were street closings that were unnecessary, Scott, and I've discussed a couple of them. We agree, one of them for sure shouldn't have happened. There was days at my personal restaurant, we were closed for two and a half days because of that, and they shut the water off. These are things that the city is obligated to make right. I've heard and heard again that when North Carolina doesn't do this, we don't do this. Everywhere else in the nation does give relief, and they do help and work with the people that's impacted by the work. We as a group charge off to come back to us with a response to the questions that we gave that day. And if we need to update everybody on the council again, Mark Stevens, who is my commissioner, I've given him the information that I have for him to start reviewing, but if y'all need to reconvene with us as a group, we're happy to come down here and meet again. But this got pushed out, and it's been drawn out way too long. This started August 14th, and there still are no answers to the questions that we had, and the businesses are still continuing to suffer from the damages incurred during this time.
I'll let you go three minutes more in your space, too. So just for the record.
I appreciate that.
As you know, we're trying to give you a good time, but we will, I mean, I think let Scott, and we've got a new council.
I understand.
I think we all need to go. I think everybody here probably knows a little bit about the issue. I think we have to get a feel from the new council on what, and what their thoughts are, where they are on all this. I don't think we will get you an answer. I don't, I didn't realize that we hadn't answered maybe broader than we should have because we've been dealing pretty much on a specific basis when people were asking for things. If we owe a broader answer, we will certainly give y'all a broader answer, no problem with that. We care as much about business as anybody. We care as much about the people downtown. We wouldn't have invested all this money if we didn't believe in our downtown. I will say I do believe wider days are ahead, so that's good for all of us. That'll make conversations better, I hope. It's always better when you have more business and people are making money, it's easier to talk. So let us, but I think as a council, we'll discuss it, and we'll try to do it quickly. We'll talk to the manager, and let's just see where everybody is, and we will certainly respond.
One two second comment. I understand it's a new council, I appreciate that, and you're getting a lot dropped on you. Do not make the mistake that the last council made and neglect the people and not respond because we as businesses will be here at your door every week, reminding you, asking you, and insisting on answers. Fair enough.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to comment? Yes, sir. If you two, we know you as well, but if you will give our clerk your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Aye. Dave Listen, 135 South Center Street.
Well, I would follow up on that a little bit, or just ask a couple of questions, is I don't know, he quoted out some money that you had to benefit the businesses downtown. Now, just my opinion, I don't, I'm not looking for one penny, okay? Because I'm on Center Street, I know Councilman Williams is on Center Street, and I don't know how many other of these businesses that Sheph Herd was talking about is on Center Street, but I understand that there were some business loss here and there, but in my opinion, this is Dave Listen's opinion, not Ruth Listen's opinion, that, you know, we all knew that this was coming, okay? I know Center Street was closed a lot for eighteen months, thereabouts, in one direction or the other. I'm on the side that suffered the longest with the Center Street construction since it took longer to go on the south side. So do I think it's the city's responsibility to keep me in business? No, I don't think it is. But if you're gonna help us out, I'd be glad to take the money, okay? But if, I'd just like to know, in the discussion of who is getting compensated, you know, how is that gonna be worked out? Equally compensated? That's good, you know?
Well, let me kinda answer that for you, okay? Let me tell you what we proposed, and that's not really...
And that's all I got to say.
And that's really not even good anymore because you've got a new council now, and what we, what we were gonna do never happened. We were, we were trying to come up with a way where we could take $21,000 is the number we came up with, and we could do seven $3,000, we can't do loans, so we had to do it under economic, I'll let Scott explain. We're gonna try to do some type of loan, we can't do loans because we're not banks.
I mean, you know, I haven't been, I mean, back to you, sir. I have not been involved in any of this discussion.
Well, that's why I want everybody to know, anybody, so they know who we are, we want to, what it was. Because apparently we didn't do a good job of getting any conversation out, so I want to, this is a great place to start the conversation. So I'll let Scott tell you what we were proposing to do, and now at this point, we'll have to take it back to this council and see what they say, but...
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, we talked about three things related to Sheph Herd and the business and the claims that were asked for. On the money side, at that meeting with merchants, we were asked could we do loans? And our, at that time, Councilmember Allen said we would consider that and we could possibly get there. And truthfully, the $20,000 or $60,000 in terms of an amount, while it will take away from something else the mayor and council want to do, that's not the issue of the dollars, is do you have the legal authority to do it? Because we are not subject to just making loans for whatever purpose we want to make loans, and the state law does not allow that. And we did call up, we rely on the school of government out of UNC, who hires attorney to help municipalities with questions that they don't know the answer to. We had our own council asking that same question, so we're at least getting a couple opinions of that. And we don't have the authority to make loans except related to economic development. So you could pick something, and what we had talked about with the council before was related to our business incentive grant program, which you do fund downtown, that is open to new businesses that come downtown and pays them back a grant of up to $4,800. And so in all of that, Sheph Herd has applied and received that grant. So we are answering some of the questions, and I would tell you, we've answered all the questions. The answers are just, we can't do that, except for this business incentive sort of loan that we were talking about with the previous council who was debating it, and then as the election occurred, we hadn't developed a program, so we didn't, it seemed unfair to start that process when you as a council may feel different. It will not help all of the businesses downtown. The problem with it, it will help those that have opened within recent history, whether that's two years or three years, or maybe five if you stretch. But you can't help businesses that have been downtown a long time because economic development is not set up that way, and that's the challenge with us loaning money. In terms of water sales, we cannot forgive water payments. We do work with all of our customers in trying to defer. Folks need to make payment arrangements for tough times, we work every day with people making payment arrangements. We would do that for any downtown business. It can't be forever, it can't be forgiven, because we as your staff have a duty under the law to collect what is owed the city. There's some minor damage, at least claimed with Sheph Herd, that he submitted to our insurance company. We carry insurers to provide that response when somebody makes a claim, and the answer was no. They denied the claim. And again, that's, that's something that if we override that, sets a very challenging precedent for you as a council. While you can pay it, how are you gonna help the businesses anywhere else in the city that suffer a similar loss based on a road closing? And we do close roads, not every day, and not for the length of time that Center Street was closed, but the length of time that Walnut Street was closed to traffic two or three days is not uncommon in our business. It just happens with utilities and stormwater and other things in the area. There is a claim for a small water filter. I think that is something that, while that wasn't paid under the claim, that is an area where I have said I'd be willing to talk. The lost sales number is very challenging for us, I have said I'd be willing to talk. I do think we have had ongoing conversations for all of these months, and so we, I want to tell you, we are responsive to people, or at least we try to be. We're just not telling the gentleman that spoke what he wants to hear from us, because he wants us to say we'll do it. So, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Chuck, this is for you. Won't you talk to Colonel Slocom about having those tankers run down 117 to 581 Westbrook Road where your stop sign is and the stoplight is and go up there? It's always went that way. They're tearing Slocom Street all to pieces. We don't have potholes, we have, look like hailstorms, little dents all up and down the street, in front of JB Road, that whole block, Elm Street, down Wayne Avenue.
You're not taking fuel to the base?
Yes, sir.
And they're coming down Slocom?
They're coming up Elm, coming down Slocom. I talked to Scott about this before, but he evidently didn't get the word to him, but they've never run trucks through town like that. They always went that way, because I farmed that land all my life, and they always went down 117 and, what is it, Arlington Bridge Road, 581 now, to the stoplight, Westbrook, back to the base. And we don't tear up the water lines. Look at our water lines. They tore up, I bet you fifteen times or twenty, they've had to tear up and patch water lines this year. On Slocom and that block.
I appreciate that.
That vibration, and that, and Elm Street coming up that hill from the big ditch, look at it, it's getting all the pieces. Those trucks just, you know, tankers especially, you know. And by the way, I want to commend the chief. He has cleaned up the gang activity on Slocom Street, a main order to the base. Him and his department has cleaned that up decently. It's not scary to ride through there anymore when you've got members on each side of the street, in there between Wilmington Avenue and Wayne Avenue. You didn't know where you were gonna get shot or not, because them bullets don't have no name on them, gentlemen.
Mr. Casey?
Yes, sir.
Is there one trucking company that does most of the tank?
Yes, it's Waka, what is it, Waka Mahaw?
Waka Mah Trucking?
Yeah, they're the ones that keep doing that, and I mean, they're just constantly running one behind the other.
This should be easy to fix. You report back to us in two weeks to form a...
Don't you worry, I will.
Let us know. Thank you, Mr. Casey. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. We know you as well, but you better get ready.
I'm Mrs. Wallace, Walnut Street Unique Gospel Galleria. You did promise Scott and Chuck to get back with that delegation that came before you that day. And yes, I've talked with you, I've talked with Chuck, but some of these business have not heard anything from you. I've tried to relay to them what you said to me, but I can't always accurately report back to them. And yes, you talk about what you can do for the new businesses, but I've been owning that building since 1996. You've never done nothing for me, I don't want you to do anything for me, but you did make me lose business. And what I said to you that day in the private meeting is this, when you plan to do a street scape, it was very short sighted of you to not look at the overall damage that it would do to the businesses that were down there. Other people have done it nationwide, and they have provided incentives for those that were affected by it. I told you in private that day, and I'll tell you in public tonight, it was a disservice, and there are people have been affected. When you don't have a lot of businesses, and there's people on Walnut Street, and they've lost what they had, they have been disproportionately hurt in this process. So whether anybody wants to accept that or not, they have been hurt, and the city does bear some responsibility in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, if not, we'll close the public comment, and thank everyone for the comments. And next, we see our hard work and planning commissions. Welcome to all y'all, glad to have you here tonight, and we'll start with our public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. Item B, Z1015, Roy Creach. The property is located on the south side of US 70 West between Clara Ridge Nursery Road and Westwood Drive. The property has a frontage of 540 feet and an average depth of approximately 1,100 feet and a total area of approximately 17 acres. The current zoning classification is general business as indicated in the hatched area on the map, and the proposed zoning classification is RM8 residential mobile home. Site and landscape development plans have been submitted as part of this rezoning request. The subject property has been operated as a mobile home park since 1972, and the current signage designates the property as Green Valley Mobile Estates. In January of 1994, the city of Goldsboro expanded its one-mile ETJ to include the existing mobile home park. At that time, the city designated the property to be zoned general business. Within the ETJ, all city zoning, building, and subdivision regulations are enforced in order to reduce the development transition between city and county jurisdictions. The map before you indicates the comprehensive land use plan, which designates the subject property for commercial use. You see that in red, and you have, yellow indicates medium density residential and green is conservation area. The property is currently used as a mobile or manufactured home park, and the current zoning is general business, which does not permit mobile or manufactured home parks. Mobile home parks that existed prior to the extension of the ETJ are allowed to continue as a non-conforming use as long as the number of spaces are not increased and the city's removal and replacement guidelines are followed. The city's ordinance allows replacement of mobile homes in the mobile home parks within six months of one being removed. If a unit is not replaced within that time, the lot loses its legal non-conforming status and can no longer be replaced. This requirement helps to ensure that non-conforming situations, which may or may not be appropriate in their present state or location, are either upgrade or eliminate over a period of time. The mobile home park was originally designated for a total of 49 lots in 1972. At the present time, only 19 mobile units occupied 19 of the total 49 lots. The remaining 30 lots have been vacant for more than six months and therefore cannot be replaced. The applicant wishes to purchase and upgrade the mobile home park but wants to be able to use all 49 of the lots within the park. Rezoning of the property and site and landscape plan approval will be required in order to ensure that the city's current mobile home park ordinance is met. The city's UDO requires that new mobile home parks meet design and performance standards, including minimum individual lot size, paved streets, street lighting, open space, interior sidewalks, landscaping, refuse disposal, water and sewer facilities, parking, and landscaping. In this case, the developer is attempting to meet as many of the city's standards as possible based on the existing configuration of the mobile home park. If the applicant cannot or does not wish to meet any of the city's requirements, modifications have been requested and approved, be requested and approved by city council. The submitted site plan addresses the city's design and performance standards as follows. Access to the property is with an existing 24-foot wide access drive to the park from Highway 70 West. A paved 20-foot private circle drive is provided for access to each lot as well as refuse and recreation areas. Landscaping, existing wooded areas will serve as vegetative buffers between the subject property and adjacent properties to the north, south, and west. The applicant proposes to install a total of seven maple trees to serve as the required street trees within the protective street yard along the highway frontage. In addition, a total of 68 maples have been proposed to serve as required street trees along the private circle drive serving as access to each mobile home lot. The site is served with city water, however, city sewer is not available. Existing septic tanks are in place to serve each of the 49 lots. The addition, removal, and replacement of homes shall meet the approval of the Wayne County Environmental Health regarding the operation of existing and newly installed septic tanks. A commercial dumpster is shown to the near the southwestern property line, which will be served by a private carrier. The dumpster will need to be screened and gated in accordance with city standards. The subject property is located within the city of Goldsboro's 100-year and 500-year floodplain. The addition, removal, and replacement of homes will be required to meet the city's floodplain ordinance subject to approval by the city engineering. The following modifications have been requested by the applicant. The minimum lot size from 8,000 square feet to 6,000 square feet. Minimum lot width from 80 feet to 60 feet. Paving, the applicant wishes to allow gravel in lieu of paved parking spaces for individual lots. Provision of paved or concrete patios and walkways to each home entrance. Interior sidewalks within the boundary of the park, and dedication of open space ownership. The city's unified development ordinance requires that 15% of the entire park be preserved for recreation, use, and owned and maintained privately. At this time, no recommendation is necessary. Planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on January 25, 2016. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing for Roy Creach. Would anybody like to speak for or against? Counselor?
As you've heard, the park was open in 1972. It met the county specifications. As time has evolved, the city's requirements are much more stringent. I think everything was stated exactly as I understand it. We also propose to remove and replace any substandard mobile homes that are out there now. I really don't know of any, but there might be. We want to pave any, you're talking about potholes, and we want to get rid of them and pave as needed and put in that landscaping. The only, the only thing that I heard that might be a problem, I hope it's not a problem, is that we did, we did want to move away from that 8,000-square-foot minimum in area, and some of those lots might be closer to 5,000 square feet rather than six. I just want to point that out. I don't know whether that's, that's correct or not. But anyway, that's our, that's our proposal. What has happened is Mr. Creach does not own the mobile home, he proposes to buy it. The gentleman who owns it lives out of town, he's suffered from, I guess, from his absence, and we want to try to rejuvenate it, simply put. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? All right, if not, we'll close this public hearing and move to the next, which would be Height Solar Farm. I would like to make one announcement on this, come on, you're good, come on, on the solar farm. We're gonna have this public hearing tonight because we had it advertised, but they have asked for a continuation, so we're gonna also have this public hearing again on January the 19th. And so if you don't say what you want to say tonight, I guess you can say it again on January the 19th. So with that, Jennifer, you go ahead and go through it.
Item C, Z1115, Height Solar Farm. The property is located on the west side of Thoroughfare Road between Central Heights Road and the Norfolk Southern Railroad. The property has a frontage of 515 feet and average depth of approximately 2,000 feet and a total area of approximately 43 acres. The current zoning classification is R16 as indicated in the hatch area on the map, which is residential, and the proposed classification, zoning classification is R20A residential conditional district to limit the use of the property to a solar facility. Development plans detailing the project will have to be approved in conjunction with the rezoning request. The property is currently vacant woods. If rezoned, the R20A conditional district use for the property would limit this to a solar facility, and development plans detailing the use will be required. The comprehensive land use plan recommendation designates the property for medium density residential development, which is indicated with the kind of yellow-orange area on the map. The city is currently holding water and sewer assessments for the property in abeyance until the property is annexed or until a developer requests its connection to the city utility lines. The costs are $4,080 for water and $7,650 for sewer. Although the submitted development plans do not include hooking on to the city's utilities, the utility assessment currently held in abeyance will have to be paid. Annexation will not be required, this property is not located within a special flood hazard This is an aerial photography of the proposed site. The submitted site plan indicates a gated 20-foot wide sole access drive beginning at Thoroughfare Road and extending westerly through the development, terminating at a cul-de-sac. Two spaces will provide parking at the time of construction and for scheduled site visits twice a year. The solar panels will be installed within a 32-acre area, surrounded by a six-foot tall chain-link fence topped with barbed wire. Existing woods will be retained for a width of at least 50 feet along the frontage as well as the sides and rear of the property. Existing woods will also be retained along the railroad line, which extends just to the south of the property. Staff will evaluate the need for supplemental landscaping in the event the existing 50-foot Staff will evaluate the need for supplemental landscaping in the event the existing fifty-foot vegetative buffer does not meet the requirements of the landscape ordinance. The proposed use could be a solar glare hazard to aircraft and a solar glare hazard analysis is being requested by Seymour Johnson Air Force Base in order to evaluate the possible effects of the solar panels on the base's mission. The air insulation compatible use zone study, which we refer to as ACOS, shows that there are two mapped flight tracks within traverse the subject property. The applicant has indicated that construction on the site will take four to six months and that the operation will be basically unmanned with no daily personnel or activity at the site. Only twice yearly site visits will be made to this location. As indicated before, um, I started with the presentation, the applicant has requested that the public hearing on this matter be continued until January nineteenth due to the community concerns. Staff recommends that the public hearing for this rezoning be continued until January the nineteenth and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on February the first, two thousand and sixteen.
Any questions, Jennifer? Thank you, Jennifer. If not, this is a public hearing for Height Solar Farm. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, sir. Please give our clerk your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you for, um, listening. My name is Peter Stewart. I live three oh two seven Thoroughfare Road. Long time, Joe.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing well, sir. You folks, Gene, you responded to me. Um, I've sent everybody, um, the, the, um, concerns of Thoroughfare Road. I've actually gone out and I've talked to everybody on Thoroughfare Road and there is, I collected names, but somebody said, "Well, you should have got addresses," but Thoroughfare is not that big and the, um, it was unanimous that they don't want it there. We had, uh, Thoroughfare is growing now and it's been a kind of a, um, it's a low-rent community and, um, I mean, a low-income community, could I say it? We are not renters. Everybody owns for the most part there. I don't know of anybody who's renting in that area. Um, people are coming back to Thoroughfare that were born there. Matter of fact, the Mitchells that just moved across the street built a house. I come out of my house and I look at this and I'm like, I'm in Walnut Creek. It's this big, beautiful house and that big, beautiful house turns around and it faces what's gonna be that, the solar farm. Okay? It's a three-story house, two stories and a, and a attic. So this is what these, this, you know, it's, people are concerned about their family. I'm concerned. I'm concerned due to there's such things as EMF and I, I have a pacemaker and I'm not supposed to be under the hood of a car and we're talking about maybe kilowatts. We're talking, you know, this very minimal thing. I'm not supposed to walk through a door. It loews when the, the motors are running because of the EMF. Now you're talking about kilowatts and you're talking, if you read about solar farms and the electricity that goes through, we're talking megawatts and we're talking major EMF. We're also talking, um, EMR, which is electromagnetic radiation, which they don't know the effects of electromagnetic, um, radiation. We've done some, I've got some information and I'm gonna send it to all of you about that because you won't know. It's, uh, it, it happens over a period of time. It's really hard on kids. Right now, they're noticing it on cell phones because people are holding the cell phones up to their head and children, it's real bad on because of the thickness of their skulls. So these things right here, they don't sound like anything to you all, but that thing's gonna border my property and if my pacemaker stops, I don't wake up in the morning. My day will go on like, uh, uh, anything else, but then, um, so I don't know. I don't get under the hood of a car because of, I was told not to. And yes, I do have fears and I have things about this, but it isn't, I'm not the only one that has problems with it. The whole neighborhood, we are all in agreement. Now, I have written a bunch of stuff to say, but I, I, I guess I will save that for the next time. I did, I did send you all the, um, information of the, the people of Thoroughfare and what our concerns are and they were all talked to. I can't talk about the annexing because I really wasn't here when the annexing, but I did voice those issues because we fought not to be annexed and we feel like, you know, when we see Laintree, they fought not to be annexed. They were, they weren't annexed, but we were, so we didn't have a voice. And now they, they didn't get a solar farm, but we don't want it, but do we have the same voice? And that was one of the concerns of people. You know, there's, um, a, an environmental justice thing that comes that was brought up to my attention. I don't know anything about stuff like that, but if, you know, we, we don't have the income that places like Laintree has, but we do have a strong family, um, bunch of people. And I, I, I'm the one, I'm the outsider and they have embraced me and they've allowed me into their community, I mean, with open arms. And these, they're, um, they really don't want the solar farm and I do appreciate your time. I don't know, um, how to do this.
Well, let me clarify three things you said, just to be sure, okay? First off, Laintree was annexed. I just want you to clarify that. The legislator, much to our dislike, unannexed them at a huge cost to our taxpayer, our taxpayers in the city. So, so just want, you know, they were actually annexed and, and they got unannexed by the legislator. We had no say-so in that.
Pardon me, was it a loss of money or a lack of revenues?
It was a loss of money.
Okay.
It cost the city taxpayers money when that happened. We, I mean, forgetting the revenue is what we had put out that we won't recover was the problem. So, but that's not, again, I just want you to know that it was annexed. Secondly, I, I'm just telling you my opinion and my, the, the reason that the solar farm didn't pass the last time is it was in our ETJ. It was not in the city limits. It was in the city ETJ. It had nothing to do with the people being wealthy, not wealthy, or whatever. It just had to be, it didn't make any sense for us to make twenty-five people mad over something that had no plus or minus to the city. Okay? So it was, it's not quite the same because you are in the city and I'm not being for or against a solar farm, I'm just wanting you to see the playing field, but, but you are in the city and so that probably does pay city taxes one way or the other. So, so I just want, those are two differences that I want to point out to you.
Well, it's, it's disheartening to me when I, um, talk to people and I did, I, I, I know everybody now because I've literally been to doors and I'm not the only one. There are a few of the neighbors that are participating and getting names, of which we did get a bunch of names, but a lot of the things is, I don't know why you're bothering. They're gonna do what they want to anyway.
That's my third point. Your economic status makes no difference, period here, and I want to take that from heart. When nobody here cares whether you're rich or poor. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna tell you, in my opinion, this council has generally done more for poor folks or, or more moderate income folks because they don't have the resources that wealthier people have. I mean, and so we, I think we've generally been more at heart with, with that, with that situation. So, so your economic status, I mean, we're gonna, I hope, and what we've always tried to do, and I'm talking too much, but we're gonna try to do what's right. That's what, that's our focus.
You know, when we're, we're building right now, um, there are people building houses and nice houses on Thoroughfare and they're concerned that if they try to refinance, that their houses aren't gonna be worth. And then we have people saying, "Well, it's not gonna lower your, your, um, the property thing, but would you wanna live by that? Would you build a house there? Would you build a house next to a field or another house?" Or what, what would be your choice in all of that?
Well, I'll tell you that if you have a planning commission out there that's gonna take everything you're saying, everything you're about to say, they're gonna weigh it in and they're gonna make a recommendation and this isn't their first time with a solar farm. So, so they'll have, they've got pretty good background on it, okay?
Well, I appreciate it and thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I just, sir, just for the record, uh, I do not recall getting any correspondence from you, but again, for the record, I did drive out and look at the property, so I am familiar with where it is.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I know I got a correspondence and, and like I say, I told you.
I didn't, I know where the property is.
Okay. Well, maybe I messed up when I did it, but everybody here was on my list and I, 'cause I went onto your website and I copied all the, the things individually and pasted them into an email. Mr. Stevens knows I'm not bashful about getting them.
Well, like I say, I expressed my...
Yes, you did and I do appreciate it, sir. I thank you very much.
I don't care what anybody's wealth is or anything else. I'm gonna do what I think's right.
That comment came from what I gathered when I talked to my neighbors, but, but, you know, at least it's, um, it's a, it's, I, I don't like the victim mentality, but a lot of it exists in that area and I don't, and I'm not, that's, I, I have to voice what they tell me, you know? And that's where I gathered all that. And, um, I'm part of Thoroughfare and I'm gonna stand as they ask me to stand.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Would anybody else like to speak to Height Solar Farm? If not, we'll close this public hearing and we will excuse our hard-working planning commission and wish them a Merry Christmas and happy holidays. And y'all are more than welcome to stay. I mean, you don't have to leave. Thank you for what you do. With that, we'll go to item D, the non-contiguous annexation request.
May the city council, item D is a non-contiguous annexation request. It's Triangle East Timber Company Incorporated property. It's located on the east side of Wayne Memorial Drive and Best Avenue. It's one point nine acre tract. The subject property is located in the black area. Um, this is Tommy Road located here. Um, this is Wayne Memorial Drive, it's located here. The city council, at that meeting on November sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen, scheduled a public hearing for the proposed annexation of the subject property. Pursuant to GS one-sixty-eight, that's fifty-eight point two, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as residents of the municipality should be given an opportunity to be heard on the proposed annexation. If the city council determines that proposed annexation meets all requirements of GS one-sixty-eight dash fifty-eight, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. In addition to those, and that, and in addition to those requirements in nineteen eighty-eight, the city council adopted a policy which allows annexation of non-contiguous annexation areas subject to a limit of requirements. On November second, two thousand and nine, the council amended the policy to be more specific, um, which refers to public water supply being available to tracts of twenty acres or more which have been requested for annexation. The requirements governing non-contiguous annexation are as follows. The area is located within one mile of the established, established city limits line. The city's ability to contract for provisions of fire and police protection. In no instance shall a non-contiguous an area have adverse effect upon the city's overall annexation plans. If an area is situated beyond one mile of the city limits, the city may consider annexation of that area so long as public water supply is available or can be reasonably made available and the tract is in question is twenty acres or more. If the tract in question is less than twenty acres but is contiguous to another satellite annexation, the city would consider the smaller tract otherwise for satellite annexation. As indicated, the attached report, the area proposed for annexation meets item A, B, C, and D. Attached is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other departments concerning the subject annexation area. I'm going to item four, plans for extension of municipal service. Eight, fire protection. The city would be able to provide service to the property which is, with existing personnel. Police protection, is, is proposed that the city would provide police protection to the property. The city's public works department can provide commercial reference relation to the subject property. No public street is included within the petition for annexation, therefore no street construction and maintenance is required. Warden sewer service. The proposed, the property is served by water through four township sanitary district. City's service, city sewer service was extended to serve the adjacent Walmart development of the Walmart neighborhood market. If annexed, the developer of the subject property would be responsible for costing incurred in hooking on to this line. Therefore, if this property is developed, then the developer would be required to extend sewer service to this property. The estimated revenues for this property would be three hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-five cents. The voting district, the city adopted a new official election district boundary map on July fifth, two thousand and eleven. It's customary to add a newly annexed area to the nearest voting district. Therefore, this area, if annexed, will be added to district number five unless the city council instructs the city staff to include this area in another district. The recommendation would be by motion, after the public hearing, adopt an order and ordinance annexing Triangle East Timber Company Incorporated property effective December third first, two thousand and fifteen. Any questions?
Thank you, Jennifer. If, if not, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak for or against this motion? If not, we will close this public hearing and you have a recommendation.
I'm moved that we, uh, approved the non-contiguous annexation request from Triangle East for the property on east side of Wayne Memorial Drive and Best Avenue.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Not, everybody say aye? Motion carries. All right. So now we'll move to consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda we had discussed earlier and it consists of items E through L. Again, your consent agenda consists of items E through L.
Move to adopt.
I second.
It's been moved. Parks, any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Graham?
Aye.
Councilmember Acock?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item we have is items requiring individual action and the item M would be the mayor pro temp discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we nominate Councilman Gene Acock, mayor pro temp for a period of one year.
Okay.
I second.
All right. Any discussion?
The only thing, you know, I've always, um, to just make it fair to have two nominees, but other than that, um, I will go along with, uh, Gene Acock.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, all of us say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. City manager's report?
You're gonna do your autograph office. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, 'cause you, you swear your name?
I do.
So, Mr. Acock, Melissa's gonna take a minute and swear you in as mayor pro temp.
She's not gonna swear at me, is she?
No, sir. We're gonna do that.
Now you gotta kiss babies.
How would you like to do this? You will be rated and then afterwards you can say, "I do." Would you want to say after that?
Can I just read it?
Well, I have to say some of it.
All right. You do what you want to and I'll, I'll follow along.
Okay. I and state your name.
Aye, Gene Acock.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain?
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office?
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp?
As mayor pro temp.
Of the city of Goldsboro?
Of the city of Goldsboro.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to, uh, the city manager's report.
Um, mayor and council have two items this evening. One, I would like to just at least address a report that we heard that was on ABC Eyewitness News about four-thirty this afternoon and I think I'll read the report. Um, and just so you know, it's out there, we will be working on a response, but the numbers at this point are what they are and if they're right, it would certainly generate some concern. So I think I will read this story as I expect it'll be news in Goldsboro. Driving while black. If you have never heard the expression, it refers to the longstanding perception that black drivers are treated differently than white drivers by police. An I-Team investigation... An I-Team investigation using the new online archive, opendatapolicingnc.com, shows the perception is backed up by the numbers. In some cases, the disparity is startling. The website looks at stop data for most larger cities in North Carolina and breaks down the stops by race, ethnicity, and violation. The numbers show black and brown drivers are consistently pulled over and searched far more frequently than white drivers. Looking at just two thousand and fifteen, in Raleigh, black drivers were two hundred and fifty-eight percent more likely to be searched after being stopped for a speed limit violation, two hundred and seventy-four percent more likely to be searched if stopped for a seatbelt violation, and four hundred and twenty-eight percent more likely to be searched if stopped for a stoplight slash stop sign violation. In Durham, the numbers were more startling, three hundred and two percent for a stoplight slash sign violation, three hundred and eighty-five percent for a safe movement violation, and six hundred and ninety percent for a speed limit violation. In Fayetteville, where they have made a concerted effort and public effort recently to combat, combat race-related specific behaviors and perceptions, in two thousand and fifteen, black drivers were two hundred and thirty-three percent more likely to be searched if stopped for a vehicle equipment violation. They were two hundred and forty-three percent more likely to be searched after a seatbelt violation stopped, and two hundred and eighty-eight percent more likely for a vehicle regulatory violation stopped. The most startling difference the I-Team found was in Goldsboro. Black drivers were more than seventeen hundred percent more likely to be searched than white drivers if they were pulled over for a vehicle equipment violation. And I will tell you, this is outside of the report, but the data I have from two thousand and fourteen that talks about equipment vehicle stops, we stopped a hundred and eighty-four, um, non-white, or fifty-seven percent, and a hundred and thirty-seven, uh, white, or forty-three percent, just data that sires from two thousand and fourteen. Back to the article, Raleigh Defense Attorney Carl Nutt Hudson says the numbers confirm what he and others have suspected for years. Unfortunately, the data has come out, has confirmed that this is not just a figment of people's imagination. There's a fundamental statistical disparity between the number of black people that get stopped for certain very minor things and a huge disparity in terms of the number of those cases that result in a search, he said. Nutson said there are maybe other factors that escalate police activity to a search after a stop such as crime rates, drug trafficking, and the location of things like DWI checkpoints, but Nutson says the data bears out what he sees in the courtroom every day. It is much more likely that your counter is going to go badly if you're a non-white than if you're a white, he said. Um, and I will tell you, I looked at data a year ago, just wondering sort of where Goldsboro was in terms of our traffic stops, and I haven't drilled down to this next level, other than what I just shared with you. This references two thousand and fifteen data, so that data I have not looked at. Again, I had about twenty minutes ahead of our, of your seven o'clock meeting to get prepared for this, and we've worked on a few notes as we've been here. But in calendar year two thousand and fourteen, the data for the city of Goldsboro, the initial purpose of traffic stop by driver sex, race, and ethnicity, which is on the North Carolina Department of Justice, um, website is where this data has come from, we pulled over five thousand two hundred and ninety-two vehicles, initial purpose of track stop, five hundred and ninety-two, five thousand two hundred and ninety-two vehicles. Fifty percent of those were black, forty-four percent were white, black or non, uh, non-white. Forty-four were white. Our census data shows we are sixty-one percent black or other and thirty-nine percent white. So, that data doesn't look like there's a problem in the initial traffic stop. The numbers don't seem to make sense to me as I look at the, uh, the number, uh, what they referred to was equipment vehicle violations. We haven't pulled over a significant number of people and then gone from that, but again, we'll be searching in and looking, uh, what the response is. The data, I assume, is what the data is. We need to find out the reason behind it or was something misinterpreted. But, the chief and I will take this very seriously and try to have a report back to you as soon as we can. I don't know if that will be tomorrow. We certainly will be working on it, but the data on this time of year, some of the folks we may need may be harder to find than others. So, we, we won't delay it because I think the issue is pretty important and we want to make sure we get it at least accurate based on what the data is for two thousand and fifteen.
Sure. I just read the report real quick while you were talking, and I think that they're stating stopped and searched. You're stating stopped, and I think that's the difference in, in, in their numbers. I think their numbers is, you might have, it might be equal, but when it comes to being searched after being stopped is their numbers that they're talking about.
And they talked about...
Those are your numbers.
Yes, sir. I, I think you're right. I mean, you're right, cause the total number is what I have, but the vehicle equipment violation that was referenced in the article in two thousand and fourteen, calendar year, not two thousand and fifteen, and they're talking about two thousand and fifteen numbers. So, we've gotta see what numbers are the numbers. But in two thousand and fourteen, we pulled over a hundred and eighty-seven for that vehicle equipment violation. That was fifty cent, fifty-seven percent non-white. We pulled over a hundred and thirty-seven, which was forty percent, forty-three percent white. So, those numbers still reflect our population. Now, it's saying that a hundred and eighty-four, if I understand the data right, somewhere in there, those were more likely, the hundred and eighty-four that were non-white were more likely to have their vehicle searched. So, we're talking about a hundred and eighty-four and how we've added a hundred and thirty-seven for that specific reason that a vehicle was pulled over, if I'm reading and interpreting right. And again, I've sort of done that, it's pretty quickly for this manager's update because I think it's a very, very important issue for our community, and if it's wrong, if the data's right, then we really have some work to do. If the data's not right, then we have some work to do to make sure we're educating people because I think it creates real concern for all.
I just think we have to look at the search number and not the actual stop number.
Yes, sir.
Cause that's what they're saying their percentages are based on.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Oh, the other thing, it's a little lighter. I just want to wish everybody safe and Merry Christmas as we go through the next week and look out for your neighbors and friends that may be blue, cause some are through the holidays, and just wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Okay.
The only thing I'd do is wish everybody Merry Christmas also.
Okay, all right. We'll move to, uh, council, mayor and council member reports, recommendations. I guess the first, let me read this resolution, um, expressing appreciation for services rendered by Kirk G. McLaurin, as employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty years. Whereas Kirk McLaurin requires on December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, as an equipment operator two in the Public Works Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than thirty years of service, and whereas Kirk began his career on October third, nineteen eighty-five, as a leaf collector in the Public Works Department, whereas on March twenty-sixth, nineteen eighty-six, Kirk was promoted to Labor Two in the Public Works Department. On June first, nineteen eighty-eight, Kirk was promoted to Equipment Operator Two in the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Whereas Kirk has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves and other city officials and employees and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Kirk McLaurin their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro that we express to Kirk McLaurin our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. We offer Kirk our very best wishes for his success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated into the official message of the city of Goldsboro and should be in full force of effect from this to the twenty-first day of December two thousand and fifteen. I offer this for adoption.
Before we adopt, um, I've known Kirk ever since he was in the ninth grade, which I taught, and he's also been the driver on my garbage route. And he and his crew have always been very, very professional, and I appreciate his hard work and dedication to the city. That being said, I move for adoption of the, uh, resolution expressing appreciation for his service.
Any more discussion? Okay, you're just gonna be the second to my offer, how about that?
Well, that's what you wanted.
That'll work, let's do that. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, we'll start with council member reports. We'll start down with Mr. Williams.
I'm new, guys, remember that. Just wanna say Happy Holidays to all my constituents and appreciate everything that you've done to help me get in office. I promise to work hard, come in, into this new year.
That it? That's it. Mr. Rowland?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe Christmas, but I'd also like to, uh, really congratulate our Parks and Rec and, and a lot of people that supported on, uh, last weekend, on Friday night and Saturday night, if they have a thing called Jingle in the Park, Friday night, we had five thousand people there approximately, and on Saturday night, we had six thousand people there. And that just doesn't happen by itself, and it was people from all over this county and everything, and our Parks and Rec people were there, our policemen were there. I felt really safe walking around both times, and I just, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Parks and Rec and the police department, and some of the firemen were there, uh, helping out too. And the next thing, on the third Friday, and I think this is right, down at Wayne County, um, at the Wayne, uh, Arcs, uh, building, they have a great jazz festival. If you go there, the place was full, and that, that was as good a jazz as I've, I've heard ever, and it's in New York or anywhere. The place is full, they're not just local, they come from other places, and as that gets more and more, that'll help us fill up downtown, and they're doing a good job. So, I'd just like to congratulate them.
Thank you, sir. See this?
Well, um, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for coming out and being a part of us, and I want you all to go into this new season and new year, um, learning and knowing one thing that I try to teach everyone, and I think that's the one thing my father always tried to portray on me, is like, what you can influence on to your, your constituents and to the people out there, is if you can influence one person, and you've done your jobs and human beings, good human beings, that, uh, the ones who are beside you and your neighbors and your coworkers, those are your brothers and your sisters, and please understand that, whether they be black or white, to remember that these are your brothers and sisters, whether, me and Chuck might not always agree, but I love Chuck, you know, he's, he's a great guy, he's my brother, and I, me, I will stand by him and we will work together to try to make the city better. So, I hope that each and every one of us going into this new season, uh, you know, work together, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Woo. Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Let's see.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
I'd just like to say that, uh, it's really refreshing and invigorating to be down here at this time of the year downtown. It's a wonderful sight to see, people on the street, people inside businesses, the lights are ablaze, and there's just a great attitude. And, you know, it's, uh, for someone who grew up, uh, years ago, many years ago in this city and saw a similar situation, it's just personally gratifying for me to be able to re, uh, recall what it was then and, and see what it's like now. And it's, I, I'm excited about where Goldsboro is headed. And secondly, to, uh, also wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Acock?
Geez, last Friday, we had the honor of going to, uh, a promotion ceremony on base, and what pleased me as much as anything was seeing how many of the city council members actually went, and I think we've had some of the best showings with this new council than I've ever seen. And it's gratifying to note that, that we have those people who are willing to work hard and do what they need to do for the citizens of Goldsboro. That being said, I want to also thank them for, you know, putting the confidence in me for mayor pro temp. You probably hear I've got a sore throat and sinus problems tonight, but I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a most prosperous New Year.
That it? All right. I got two or three things I want to touch on quickly. One is, I just want to thank the Salvation Army, I don't know if any of y'all noticed, but last week, and it was, they did a good article in the paper, Ethan, but they did like four hundred angel trees, and all day long, I saw people going in and out of the old fire station, getting packages from the Salvation Army, and there's a lot of good people doing a lot of good things, but I just happened to come upon that and just want to thank them again for what they did. This past Friday, a really good young man named James Williams came by the mayor's office and asked me to, and he's been, spoke to the council before, but he asked me to come by and just say, "Hey", he was having a Come Hang With Us talent show at the Herman Park Center, and he had Orlando, who's the drum line guy, who's also, we've done some stuff for us. But anyway, they asked me just to come by and say, "Hey", and I said, "Okay, I will", and I thought there'd be twenty-five people. Oh, I'm telling you, when I walked in the Herman Park Center, it was packed. They were doing a talent, it's their second talent show. It was awesome to see all those young kids and parents in there, you know, they're teaching them respect, they're teaching them to stay busy, and I was just really, really impressed. So, anything, anytime you see James in the Come Hang With Me, that's a really good thing going on, so I want to do what we can to support it. Uh, I guess the other thing is, is as everybody knows, Christmas is coming, a lot of people are gonna generate a lot of trash. We ask that you contain your trash, don't let it get on our streets. It's supposed to be really pretty over Christmas. If you get really ambitious and you want to go outside and pick up somebody else's trash, that's fine too. But just do whatever we can over Christmas to help keep our city clean and help clean our city. I think it's very important. Uh, I would also say that you, we all need to remember those who need worse than we are. I know there's a lot of kids that are out of school that may not get the meal that they would normally get over these next couple of weeks. There was a bit of article in the paper about it today in Raleigh, but I think that's something to be very aware of. We talk about that a lot, what happens to kids when they're not getting fed, and that's really important.